Call this meeting of the Vestavia Hills Board of Education to order. Do I have approval of the agenda? For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the August 27, 2018 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Freeman?
All right. Board members, we've got several recognitions to do tonight, and these are always exciting times of the evening. Our first group is kind of already here, but we have our cheerleading teams, our red team and our blue team, competition teams just up here. So as best you can, guys, stand up and let's come to the front. And their coaches, Melissa Kathy. Come on, guys. We need to get some good witness. All right. We have two teams now that have competed with us last year, and this is exciting recognition. And so the first one is our red team. I'm trying to get this right. Our red team competed last year, won the state championship at Wallace State, and then went to Orlando and won bronze medal, and were invited to the international competition this year.
World, yes, back to the world championship.
All right. Okay. All right, so who is the, who are the red team? I guess the ones in the red. It makes a lot of sense. But the blue team's not in blue. The blue team's in white, right?
I get the point.
Yeah, okay. The blue team, the blue team is, the game they division competed in Orlando, won the national championship in your very first year competing. That is outstanding. And so both teams won UCA Southern Regional Championship, all right, in their respective divisions in December. So when do we compete again?
November 15.
Yes.
All right. And that is the-
Regional competition for state.
Okay.
Yeah, they started it, we have a regional to qualify for state now.
Any other comments? What do you want to make?
It was a great moment, wasn't it, Rebelson?
Hi, Rebelson.
They represent us very well, and I'm used sort of to our talent, but your reputation precedes you very well, thought of and respected throughout the state. My wife is a former cheerleader coach, and she tells me that, so I believe that to be true.
They say perseverance and principles out there.
Well, congratulations. Thank you, guys.
I need sleep.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Mr. Beck, what on the call?
Yeah.
Hey.
Please.
Board members, you all know Ms. Deanna Bell. She is our music teacher at Vestavia Hills East, and one of the first teachers that I got to meet. And over the course of the last three years, she's been a part of a certification process, I believe at University of Alabama-
Yes.
Called CODI Concept. And I would like for her to explain to you what CODI Concept is, and that she has just achieved what is a very impressive honor to finish that process. Deanna?
Well, CODI, the philosophy behind CODI music education is more active involvement in the classroom. So instead of like teaching the skill and just kind of showing it on the board, the kids experience it first. And so there's like a real target towards active music making, there's a lot of gameplay, there's a lot of team building involved in it. And when I first decided that I wanted to find out about it, I just fell in love with it. And so Level 1 was so fun, Level 2 was really hard, and then maybe there were some tears in Level 3. But thanks to our curriculum instruction directors for supporting me through this process, we now have two other music teachers. Kate Donaldson has finished Level 1, and Trudy Capasori has finished Level 2, and now she's about to start her journey. I've told people it's harder than National Boards. It was harder than my thesis for my master's degree. But it has made like our kids so happy to be able to play games, and they play these games at recess, which I think is amazing. I'll teach them a game in the music classroom, and then I'll see them playing it. The teachers will video it and send it to me. But I'm real proud of the change that I've seen in our kids. The one thing is just when you come into my room, my kids are happy, and they're making music, and that to me is well worth all the certifications.
Yeah, one of the things I think is wonderful about this process is you can get master's degrees, doctoral degrees, national board certifications. Something like this, you don't get any pay for it. There's not that tangible benefit. But I think Deanna is an example of what we want all of our school staff, our organization to be about, and why we want to learn. I'm doing this simply to get better at my craft, and to make sure my passion spills over to the kids, and that's, that's quite an accomplishment indeed. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I should want to mention, I'd also want to mention while you're up here is that you may or may not know Deanna, so she's quarter finalist right now for a Grammy nomination for her work in K-12 music education. That is a very national, that's a national honors, very prestigious one, so you're finding out this month.
We find out this month. Currently, we have, I'm a quarter finalist for the Grammy Music Educator of the Year. And when I told Dr. Richardson, he was like, "Was that the real Grammy? I don't know." I was like, "No, it's the real Grammy, you know, the words in Hollywood." He went, "Oh, okay."
Well, it's always so supportive.
The other I would be like, Kanye, I'm gonna get it. It's like, she deserves it.
Right. I do have the grace, of course, but I actually found out this month if I advanced to the semifinalist, which is the top 25 in the country. Currently, I'm at 188. Really, the best thing about the entire process was I got to make a video portfolio of my school music program, and I got to send it to the Grammy Recording Academy. So they got to see what we do at Vestavia East, and that was fantastic, so.
Dr. Richardson, I think it was a year ago, was given the award of Instrumental Year in Support of Music Education in the state. I noticed that when I was studying about the Vestavia system, and when I asked him about it, he attributed that to his teachers. So you're largely responsible for that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Mary Busby is with us today, and Mary is a teacher at the high school Vestavia Hills, high school bemoan this, is it?
This is my, no, this is my third year.
Third year, okay. And recently, the National Council for Biology Teachers, I'm not saying that exactly right-
That's okay.
-acknowledged her as the Outstanding Biology Teacher of the Year in the state of Alabama. And she will be recognized later on in the shared living in San Diego, with the national crowd that's there as well. But that is quite a distinctive honor, and we were fortunate to be there a couple weeks ago when she was given that award. And so that's a, that is a well-earned achievement, and speaks a lot to the work you're doing in biology. So tell us a little bit about the whole process.
So the awards, it's an award from the National Biology Teacher Division, so you get nominated, and then your application goes before a review committee, and they, I'm not sure how they whittle that down. I'm, I can tell you, I'm very humbled to be here. I think just seeing the people that were here tonight, I think that we have a great, incredible staff. So I'm honored to be a part of that. And so the Biology Teacher Award is amazing. So my love language is words of affirmation. So for me, like all the, "Way to go," that's just like, yay, that's awesome. But I'm also very, I never think of myself as doing anything outstanding. I make relationships with kids, and we do science in our classrooms. I think I, I feel very blessed to be here because our administration and past even the school level gives us so much freedom to be creative and innovative, and gives us the support when we want to do that. And if things fail, we just try again another day. And so it's exciting to be here, and I think that I am, I think that the reason, the fact that I'm here is probably one of the reasons that I was chosen as Alabama's Best Biology Teacher, because I have the freedom to be the best. So I appreciate that.
Somebody knew your love language, because at the presentation that day, there was a large board, and people wrote comments. So I guess you have that in the living room?
Well, actually, it's a hallway outside my classroom right now. I think I have to take it home. I think that it's done its duty, so.
Dr. Burgess, comments?
Hey.
There you go.
Mary's great. She's, she's exactly right, and she's humble in spirit with everything she gives. She's great in her classroom, but again, we have a whole faculty full of great teachers, and we're honored to have Mary represent us, in that we knew when she came to us three years ago, she was coming with a wealth of experience and a great approach to teaching and learning, which is what we wanted to share across our, not only our department but our school, and she's been helpful in that through our different processes for professional growth. So we're proud of her, gonna be more than happy to support her.
Thanks so much.
Let's bet you go all Kanye in San Diego.
Good for us, he did.
Yes.
Wow.
I can sing a little.
Kanye can sing a little, too.
Oh, just a sample.
In the weeds after this. I'd like to invite Jennifer Bailey and Brooke Round up to join us. I'm gonna deliver a report to you that on the work that's been done by our staff speaking of professional growth, what's been taking place the last several months. Brooke, Jen, thank you for presenting, and take your way.
So we just wanted to share with you tonight, or this afternoon, a few things that we've accomplished through curriculum instruction somewhat over the past, I'd say at least past semester, past year, and then talk a little bit about our summer professional development. So a few important things that we've had going on is, one is a big focus on grading and reporting. We've done several things even throughout the elementary schools, really focused on aligning our grading practices. But one of the greatest accomplishments would be our kindergarten team, who started working in the spring, not this past spring, but the spring before that, started working on really developing a standards-based report card. And it sounds like maybe not a huge task, but it has been a major task. And so that committee consisted of kindergarten teachers from all of our elementary schools, assistant principals, and our instructional coaches. And so we really developed a new report card, which is rolling out this year. It's very exciting. And along with that, our coordinating assessments that go along with that. So again, it sounds, you know, when you see it, it's a piece of paper, but all the work and conversations that really went into developing that were a lot of work. So we're excited to be rolling that out this school year, and our first grade team is beginning the same work this fall. So our goal is to then roll out a standards-based report card for first grade next year, and then continue that plan each year, adding a grade through fifth grade. So that's a major accomplishment. The other thing is a big focus on areas of intervention. And you can see up here various programs or resources that are listed, and some of these have been in place, but we've just really continued the training and helping develop our teachers in these areas. So I just wanted to highlight a few of those. Read and Math 180 and System 44, which are currently being used at the secondary levels, middle school and rolling into high school now, to really help with Tier 3 intervention for our secondary students in reading and math. We have Do the Math in Place, which is for our elementary students who also need support with math, with Tier 3 math. Level Literacy Intervention, we just had another training on that recently, and again, that provides reading support for our elementary students. Spire, which we have been using mainly at elementary, a little bit into the middle school level, that helps specifically with students who are struggling with literacy issues, and a lot of times students who may have a diagnosis of dyslexia or even exhibit characteristics of dyslexia. And then the final one, which has been a work of a major team, Jennifer and I, along with Candace, worked on the CI3T plan for all of our schools, which you can see is the Comprehensive Integrated Three-Tier Model of Prevention. And that really looks at academic, social, and behavioral intervention, starting with Tier 3, but then what can we do to support all of our kids in Tier 2 and Tier 3 as well? And this is something, we have, you know, bits and pieces of it in our schools, but this has really, you know, been a district-wide focus, to have something in place for all of our students, K-12. So that is being implemented this year. A few other things we want to highlight are focus on teacher development. And so the first one is our Teacher Leaders Cohort, which Jamie, Jennifer, and I actually led our first cohort, and I know they were recognized, I believe, in May at that board meeting. And so that was a group of 29 teachers, and they spent 18 months in that cohort. And there, I could say a lot about that, but you know, you can see the goal was to really develop leaders who could lead on their teams, their grade level, and their departments, and Mary Busby's a great example of that. She was a part of this first cohort. And then instrumental in another piece of that as well, which I'm going to talk about. But that is, to me, I feel like the Teacher Leader Program has been a great, we've had a great start, and we'll start our new cohort in the winter. So that's exciting. The second thing to highlight is our mentoring revamp. So with the focus on what can we do to improve how we mentor our first-year teachers, but then what do we do with our teachers who are in their second and third year with us? And so we really worked, it came out of one of the projects from our Teacher Leader Group, and Mary Busby was a part of that, along with Susan Zanna, Brad Weisack, a couple other teachers we've recognized before. And so the need to really see what can we do to continue professional learning for our teachers after year one, to really continue to mentor and help them to grow. And so this year, we have school-based small groups that are really focused on professional growth. And the neat thing about that is that teacher leaders, some who were actually in the cohort, are the ones leading those mentoring of small groups at their schools, with the focus on peer observation. Some of them are doing video, you know, videoing their lessons, reflecting together, and then they're focusing on some professional learning together. So we're excited about that revamp for this year, and we'll look at it again in the spring and see, you know, how can we even improve it more for next year. This summer was very, very active for our teachers. We had approximately 400 teachers who participated in professional learning through things that we hosted here or at other locations, or through DIYs, the ones that they designed. What we do in the winter is we send a survey and ask teachers what they feel like they need to improve their instructional practice, areas that they feel they need to grow in, and we design professional learning over the course of the summer based on their needs and their responses. So that way, it's very targeted, it's very specific to what they've expressed as needs. And we also look at data from, you know, classroom assessment, what we know from that, but also from district assessments, and use that to inform what we offer. So we had a lot of teachers who participated. ADI is something that started at the high school, again, with teacher-driven learning and growth. The Science Department, Jessica Sutherland went to a training, and she brought it back to the Science Department to Mary Busby and some other science teachers, and they really dug in, and it, we, I mean, I've seen firsthand the growth in student writing and student thinking in their classrooms, and how they talk about science, and they just do science differently. But that's now taken fire and is moving at the high school, but has also gone down into the middle school. And so Jessica's done some trainings with the middle school teachers and continues to work with the high school teachers on that. Another continuing area is O-GAP. We did that this summer with second grade did the additive, and third grade did multiplicative, and that would be something that they go back to throughout the course of the year. In fact, they went back a couple weeks ago. And so they would bring data from their classrooms and use that to inform their math instruction. And so with number talks and different other elementary math, professional learning sessions, that just continues to be a focus, which we started a couple years ago. We also had teachers who were very interested in looking at marginalized populations, and so we had several studies over the course of last year on understanding poverty, and we hosted some professional learning sessions on that this summer as well. Because of the CI3T that we've done throughout the district, we felt like we needed to support teachers. If we're asking secondary teachers to have an active classroom and to provide tiered instruction in their classrooms, we need to support them in showing them how to do that and how to do that well. So we provided some learning on management in the active classroom, and we continued with the standards-based instruction and learning targets that we started years ago with our Run Burger study and learning of student-engaged assessment practices. And then the DIYs again were very, very successful. These are professional learning sessions that teachers design, that they collaborate with one another, and that they execute really just with our support as they need us. And so it's very, very targeted. It's great especially for the secondary teachers because their content areas can be so specific. And we had a great deal of writing PD this summer that they designed, and collaborated across curriculum areas, and were able to talk about how to support history and social studies teachers as well as science teachers in teaching students how to write like scientists. We had even PE learning targets, which is really cool, and something that maybe gets glossed over, but it's exciting that the PE teachers in our district wanted to come together and have learning targets and very meaningful instruction in PE classes. And then World Languages continue to really work towards proficiency and the seal of biliteracy, and so they met several times over the course of the summer to talk about their new curriculum, to talk about their new resources, but also to refine their, the things that they do for the seal of biliteracy and their proficiency alignment. And of course, Deanna Bell and some of the music teachers spent a great deal of time this summer aligning the music curriculum, so. Any questions?
That 400 or so teachers, about 70% of our teaching staff participate in summer professional development. That's tremendous. I think we can very well organize the Teacher Leader Academy to do it yourself, professional development, some of the bigger and major concepts in place here, and that's it. So thank you guys very much. All right. Martin, be coming up now to give you an update on something that we talked about in July. We brought to you, and have reached a point where we're ready to move forward with it on background.
Volunteer background checks. Take your way. Board members of the board, you had a chance to see procedural language in July, volunteer background checks, and so Dr. Freeman asked if I would go and do some research on this and find vendors that we could possibly work with. We sent out an RFP, Request for Proposal, and received three responses back. One from Cogent, Valento, one from Raptor, who we currently use in our buildings, as well as one from Background IQ. Dr. Freeman and I then vetted the proposals that were provided to us, and based on price as well as our, Vestavia Parks and Rec are already using the database, but Background IQ selected them as the firm that we like to go with. And Jackson Tate from Background IQ is here today to answer any questions that board members may have. I want to share with you, based on the price that we received, some of the pricing was less than what was provided to you in July on the, in the procedure, in terms of her background check process, so.
What I've been a bit from that is if they have completed the background check, the Parks and Rec, they don't have to do it again, and that would be a number of events. That's a convenient way to handle that database. That's fantastic.
And this is for overnight volunteers, correct?
Volunteer, yes. Volunteers, only volunteers that will be traveling overnight, so for example, a eighth, fifth grade field trip would be an example of a background check.
Would you mind sharing essentially the databases that are pulled from with this tier? We chose a tier level that we believe provided the best value for us, and is what the city uses actually in terms of their background.
Absolutely. My name is Jackson Tate, and I work for Background IQ. And a little background about me, I have a law degree, and then I'm also certified through the National Association Professional Backgrounds Group. So I really have a pretty fair grasp on, on this industry. And so databases are one tool we use, but in Alabama, we like to use what's called a primary source pull. That means that in real time, we can check every courthouse in every county in Alabama. That's totally different from a database. What it does is we use it kind of as a yin and a yang, with the multi-jurisdictional database and the primary source pull. So that gives us a better real-time idea of what we're dealing with, and it's not outdated information. Is that a question asked, or I just told you?
No, no, Bonnie, yes, he wanted to know in terms of, because you have three different tiers, correct? And this is the middle tier.
Absolutely. We have, we can customize packages as needed. We can do anything for professional licenses. We can do all sorts of different searches, and the middle tier was the most appropriate one for your needs, is kind of what we, the conclusion that we reached.
And the turnaround time for that, for those backgrounds, is about how much time?
I mean, we're talking a day. If it's on the weekend, it'll be business hours.
And there were some instances where it would be turned around business days.
Absolutely. I like the arrow on the side of Lynn.
You'll coordinate through Parks and Rec, you'll give you the list, you'll pull already, who's been active in the last year.
Is it yearly? What's the window? If Parks and Rec does it, and that parent says something for school, I mean, two years down the road, three years down the road, how frequent is this?
We like to do it annually, but it's totally up to you. We can do it every day, we can do it twice a year, we can do it, we are, we're here served on.
The way it was explained to us when we were vetting this process, was that whatever we would like, they're going to work to make sure that we give the product that we are looking for.
Pardon my saying. And just, Mr. Main, just so we know, Background IQ's owned by a state attorney, who will be the same or like an attorney general commission, there's no conflict of interest, correct?
That is correct, and I'd like to expand on that a little bit, if I may. The Alabama Code of Ethics applies to public officials as well as public employees. An example, five board members are public officials, and faculty and staff members are public employees. Basically, the Alabama ethics law prohibits public officials and public employees from one, using their office or position for personal gain, two, having a conflict of interest, and three, accepting something more than of de minimis value to influence their vote. The fact that Steve Ammons is a public official does not prohibit him from doing business with another government entity, in my judgment. And let me make the example even clearer. I submit that background searches are exempt from the public competitive bid law because it's consulting. But let's say that it required bids, and let's change the facts and put Steve Ammons sitting as one of these chairs. If the matter's put out for bid where it's fair and square, he could still get the business. But the answer is no.
And for the record, the firm that was closest in terms of price per background check was at $15 per check. Background IQ came in at 11. So they were, they did have the lower price, and actually, I think, we'll receive more service from that in comparison to the competitor.
Vestavia, please.
Oh, we're right on the trigger. Is it Alabama Vestavia native before?
Yes. Jackson said earlier that a little background on, and he will also be going through a background check, and we'll provide that to the Board of Education, so you can.
Bring it on. It'll be our first check of the system.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Out of five, Courtney, financial statement for July.
Good afternoon. In your board packet, you have the investment balances as of July 31, 2018. You have the combined balance sheet and statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget and actual for all funds as of July. You have the budget actual comparison report for the general fund for the month of July. And I provided a new report this year, or this month. It's the check register for the month of July. This is one of the required reports that we have to have on our website about the state, so I've started providing that for your review as well. But if you wanted to just see it on the state website, you could. The monthly financials are also on the website, and that's the required reports. But for July 31, all board bank accounts have been reconciled, and I would just like to point out a couple of things on the budget actual comparison report. As of July 31, 2018, we have received 94.97% of our budgeted revenues, and at this date last year, we were at 91.9%. And then for expenditures, as of July 31, we have spent 86.25% of our budgeted expenditures, and last year, we were at 87.1%. So we're right in line for last year and for our budget. Does anyone have any questions about the reports?
Thank you. I'd recommend the board approve the financial statement for July 2018.
I'd recommend the board approve the financial statement for July 2018. Board bank accounts have been reconciled through July 2018.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the financial statement. Do I have a motion to approve?
Excuse me, somebody.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item six, I recommend the board approve the consent items related to state and overnight field trips and disposal of property.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion?
No discussion really, but I noticed one of those was going to, I believe, Charlotte this week in the eye of the curtain. Boy, certainly.
We'll try to use good judgment, Stephen.
Thank you, Brian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item business item A, I'd recommend the board approve the fiscal year 2019 budget and capital plan as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the 2019 budget and capital plan. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Any discussion about that? We discussed it, what, three times or so recently? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, I'd recommend the board approve change order number one with Willoughby Orland Construction LLC and the credit amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, excuse me, and twenty-seven cents for a new kitchen cafeteria and classroom addition for Vestavia Hills Elementary East as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the new kitchen cafeteria classroom addition for Vestavia Hills Elementary East. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Talk about it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, I'd recommend the board approve the low bid from Blaylock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of four million, three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for renovations for a new middle school package C gymnasium addition as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the renovation for the new middle school package C gymnasium addition. Do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Would one of you second that? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, I'd recommend the board approve the contract between Blaylock Building Company Incorporated and the board in the amount of four million, three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars for renovations for a new middle school package C gymnasium addition as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the contract. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Any discussion? Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir.
Feel good about the contract?
I do. I've reviewed it and I recommend it from a legal standpoint. I've written to it and I'd be glad to answer the question.
I think that'll suffice. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And that was an honor, Mr. Freeman. Item E, I would recommend the board approve the facilities used contract and be scheduled as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the facilities used contract and be scheduled. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, members, this has been, since spring of 2016, the document has existed. There's no change into it, but the policy does require board approval. So I wanted to make sure that form out and let's take a look.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item F, I'd recommend the board approve the 2018-19 renewal of the Alabama Trust for Boards of Education General Liability Errors and Omissions Liability Fund Participation as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to renewal for the general liability, errors, and omissions participation. Do I hear a motion to approve? Or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So, Dr. Freeman, is this just an annual?
It is.
Deal we have to do?
It is. We've been anticipating it for several years. It's an annual contract we've got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item G, I'd recommend the board approve the 2018-19 renewal of the Alabama Trust for Boards of Education Automobile Fund Participation as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to renewal of the automobile fund participation. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Any discussion? Same thing, Dr. Freeman?
Yes, sir. We update these based on our current count of automobiles so that there sometimes can be just small changes.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Items A through L are based on revised board policies that had their first reading August 13th, 2018. So under H, I recommend the board approve the revised board policy 4.1, security access to schools as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to board policy 4.1, security and access to schools. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? So, Dr. Freeman, the idea here, I think we talked about this last meeting, but the idea here was to revisit and are we incorporating any changes from?
The only change here was a clarification that it does not impend a board employee's ability to do their job essentially in matters related to safety. This is strengthening really a policy, strengthening of employees' rights to do their job.
And protect them with their cloak of discretionary function immunity under law.
Any questions about the cloak? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. You don't hear that word very often.
Item I, I recommend the board approve revised policy 4.11, political activity as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to board policy 4.11, political activity. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Freeman, for the record, you want to give us a little brief on that?
The main change, if you would call it change, I think is just bolstering the point that if you open up your facility to one political entity or, or candidate, you would have to do that for each of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item J, I'd recommend the board approve revised policy 5.1, employee qualifications and duties as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to revised policy 5.1, employee qualifications and duties. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? Dr. Freeman, a little brief for the record.
Oh, can I?
It just better finds the terms, dude. That's it.
And it is on the heels of some recent decisions in court about student-teacher relationships and defining what a student actually is. It actually was a broader definition essentially. Not too much sure there is no misunderstanding of what a student and employee is.
It may be helpful to review, as we did a month ago, the Alabama Association of School Boards revised our policy manual, which we adopted in 2015. Every one of these five recommendations comes from the Alabama Association of School Boards. And I've looked at all of them and from a legal standpoint, they're fine to me. Dr. Freeman and I have downloaded all of them. His options.
That one. This one in particular is, I think, unnecessary unfortunately to try to clear up any misunderstanding. Even if you don't teach a student essentially, they're still a student, an employee. So that's about as clear as I can make that up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item K, I'd recommend the board approve revised policy 5.18, drug and alcohol testing of safety sensitive employees as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to revised policy 5.18, drug and alcohol testing of safety sensitive employees. Do I hear a motion?
Seven.
Second.
That's fast. Thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Freeman, you want to say anything about this one?
The only change I would note to you about this one is safety sensitive positions to the doser of driving vehicles, less drivers, for example, less employees. And there's a change in the amount of time from four hours to eight hours in which the testing must occur.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item L, I'd recommend the board approve revised policy 6.15 searches for students as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to revised policy 6.15 searches. Do I hear a motion?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Dr. Freeman, just to be consistent?
Yes, sir. Mr. Boone, perhaps you can put this in the right language?
This policy, the issue of searching students is a, is a, is a tender sort of issue. And this policy says that if you suspect that a student is guilty of one thing and you search that student, then you can punish him only for finding what you suspected in the first place. If the student's violating something else, different policy, then it might be an illegal search.
So, so an SRO that searches for a cigarette and finds a knife or a weapon, the student can't be punished for the weapon?
You know, that's a good question. And I hate to talk so much, but the United States Supreme Court decided the case of TLO versus the state of New Jersey about thirty years ago. What happened in TLO was a female student went into the restroom and there was smoke everywhere. And the school officials decided that they had probable cause to believe that the child was smoking cigarettes because there was smoke everywhere. They opened the child's purse on a student search and instead of finding cigarettes, they found marijuana. So that's what I'm talking about. It, it says that in the criminal field, a police officer has to have probable cause to believe the crime is about to be committed or has been committed. In the schoolhouse, it's different. We don't have that challenge. All we have to have is reasonable suspicion. But at the same time, in fairness to the students, this policy seems to say to me that if you suspect that Johnny has done this and find out that he's done something else, then there's no prosecution. I'm not a big fan.
So then what happens?
The recommendation, the recommendation from A to B is, I think largely on the cases that are being glossed because of this type of search. You concur with that, Mr. Boone?
I do. You know, this, this, this policy language, this ad, it says, provided that the nature and extent of the search shall be reasonably related and limited to the suspected violation. That says to me, if you're looking for cigarettes and find liquor, it's no violation.
I just want to, so if you do a search and you're looking for something that end up finding a weapon, there's nothing you can do?
That's what it seems to say.
I want to concur with you for the first time.
Can we table this and discuss this one?
It just seems like if it's the school, it's been a really bad decision.
I think the es- the essential question is, would the search be a winnable search? And the TLO measure would ask, would it be probable? And would it, would it have been conducted in the right manner? So I think what we could do is, is to try to use a deeper concept of what the rationale is to do it. It's not, it's not state mandated law. So it should make sure discretion policy.
Yeah, I think I'd just like to benefit of some more information on, on saying that.
Let me see, let me see if I can give a, a better, I stumbled a little bit on this one. This policy does not deal with a personal search. I think if you searched a student with a suspected violation, looking for cigarettes and found a weapon, guilty. This has to do with searching the personal effects such as a bookbag or an automobile or something of that nature. This isn't, this provision does not apply to a personal search. It's the personal effects of the student. There's a section
That's what I keep.
That, that decides, that addresses personal searches and this is not in there.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, I'm going to use Tyler as an example because he's at the high school. I know you were going to, I'm sorry. But, you know, Tyler or one of his teachers gets wind of a bookbag that has something in it and they go and they search the bookbag and the cigarette's not in it, but marijuana or vaping or, you know, whatever an infraction is, is found. Basically, we're, we're given the, excuse the, you know, the frankness of it, but we're giving it, good job, you're not smoking cigarettes. Go back to class. And when we're dealing with the health, safety, welfare, if not on the student body, the teachers, the administration within the building.
All I can say is that, that the School Board Association has recommended that this be added to the provisions dealing with the search of personal effects, but not to the person. I could do with that, I'll say.
If that's all, I'd like to ask for a motion to table this so that we can all reread a couple of sections closer. We need to bring it forward next month. We'll do it next month. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
If I may say this, and I'm going to quit talking. I usually don't talk this way. But about thirty years ago, this school system was a defendant in a lawsuit that I handled before the Supreme Court of Alabama. And the facts were these. A fifth grade class had raised some money to buy some fish with a fish boat. One child remained in, in the classroom during PE because they didn't feel well. The remaining students and the teacher went to play period. The child stayed in classroom. When the teacher and the other students returned, the eight dollars that they had saved up was missing. And the teacher made a personal search of a female fifth grade student in front of the class. We were sued. I still to this day don't know how we won, but we won. We were sued. I still, to this day, don't know how we won, but we won it in the Supreme Court of Alabama. The money was not found, the child didn't take it, but we committed a strip search of a fifth grade. The reason I can say that is books, I mean, the case is reported in the law books, so it's not.
All right.
It happened thirty years ago.
I'd still like to table it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item A, I'd recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regards to personnel actions submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, it's time for public comment. Please limit your comments to items on the agenda, be brief. And with none, that's the end of this meeting. Thank you.